Or an event on the scale that we do. I'd like to take a moment to thank them for their leadership and their staff for all the extra work that we know this festival brings. This year, the Crookston Fire Department is going to be involved in so many of our events, and it's going to make this year, this comeback year, extra special. I can safely say we couldn't do it without them either. So, thank you to Chief Frower, to Bob Banksam, and Garrett Banksam, and the rest of the CFP for your incredible work and your endless support. A thousand thanks also to Chief Paul Biermeyer and the Crookston Police Department for the security and the traffic control and everything that they do for us. To the council and the rest of the city administration, we'd also like to express our gratitude for all you have done to make this festival happen year after year. This year is going to be a whole new kind of event as we have attracted some national attention, and having the city leadership playing a visible role in this festival is another opportunity to bring our community together and celebrate the city that we love. So, thank you, and we will have some words with your names on them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ashley?
Chad, is there anyone waiting on the phone bridge?
There is, in fact, someone on the bridge. Hello caller, please go ahead. And the caller just left, so there isn't longer anyone on the bridge.
Thank you. Would you please sign off the city's phone bridge?
Yes.
Agent logged up.
Okay, moving on, we have one presentation tonight. City of Crookston mayoral proclamation to declare August 17th, 2021 as Charles H. Casey Day, whereas during Casey's tenure as chancellor, the university oversaw the largest on-campus student enrollment and developed a strong budget with reserves for later times to come, including significant growth in philanthropy and scholarships for needy students during Casey's time of service. And whereas Casey also approved, achieved approval and funding for two resident halls and a state-of-art wellness center, which all contributed to the enhanced student experience. Whereas Dr. Casey has given leadership, commitment, and extraordinary service to the University of Minnesota and the state of Minnesota. Dr. Casey was responsible for initiating many programs in area of excellence, which put the University of Minnesota Crookston not only on the map, but improved rankings and statue of the university. The university improved its rankings with the U.S. News and World Report to number one in a four-year regional university and achieved Higher Learning Commission North Central accreditation for the campus. The University of Minnesota Crookston was the first university of Minnesota campus to achieve accreditation for online program that was offered under the leadership of Casey. And whereas Dr. Casey readily accepted the role as dean for the University of Minnesota Extension to help to reorganize and re-envision the delivery of programs through a cost-effective regional model. This has become the standard of extension programming across the United States. And whereas Casey brought other resources to the university as chancellor, he helped to establish a rural health in collaboration with the Minnesota Rural Health Association and education program, making the University of Minnesota Crookston a regional hub for community vitality, a key distinguishing factor of the university today. Now, therefore, I, Dale Stanbrook, Mayor of the City of Crookston, do hereby proclaim August 17th, 2021, as Charles H. Casey Day. In testimony whereof, I hear, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Crookston, Minnesota, to hereby proclaim August 17th, 2021, as Charles H. Casey Day. Michelle.
Gave over there, but.
Sarah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I made that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clayton, is there a second?
I'll second it. Either one.
We'll go with Tom. Discussion. Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Jerdie?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Platt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
It brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Don, is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Delane, roll call, please.
Jerdie?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Platt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Okay, no public hearing. Brings us to the regular agenda.
Yes, Your Honor, item 8.01 is a resolution to approve the Oxcart Dance Permit located at the downtown square.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Delane.
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Don, discussion. Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Jerdie?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Platt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Item 8.02 is a resolution to approve Irishman shanties dispensing of intoxicating liquor on premises at the community festival, Your Honor.
Should I have the motion first?
I'll go first.
Oh, Amy. Your Honor, I just, for the mayor and council, on your next, your item 8.02 and 8.03, your resolution states that they were requesting from 4:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. When we looked at the schedule of events on Oxcart days, they were planning to start those at 11:00 a.m. We would request that, should you so desire that in your motion to approve both 8.02 and 8.03, that you may direct us to change that start time to 11:00 a.m. for the Saturday events, and then we would be happy to make that change on those resolutions before they're signed tomorrow.
I move to make the change to 11:00 a.m.
I think we have to have a motion first.
Yeah, he did. You made the motion, and then, yep.
Second, Don?
Yes.
Discussion. So, this is just Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 1?
1:00 a.m., yes. The end times will remain the same, the only change would be to the start time on your, those two resolutions to begin on Saturday at 11:00 a.m. per the Oxcart event schedule.
Okay. Now, roll call, please.
Jerdie?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Platt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Item 8.03 is a resolution to approve the Giraffe Sports Bar and Grill dispensing of intoxicating liquor on the premises at the community festival. Again, just as a reminder that this is the start time would be the same as 11:00 a.m.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So I make that motion, Your Honor.
Got Joe and Clayton, thank you, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Jerdie?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Platt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Item 8.04 is a resolution to approve the Crookston Inn dispensing of intoxicating liquor on premises at the community festival.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So, there is no changes to this one, Amy, at all?
That's correct. Yes, this one was just for, one day, on the 20th, from 5:00 to 7:00 for a wine tasting. So, a little bit different than the Beer Gardens, but did require a separate resolution for that.
Do I have a motion?
Yep.
Tom, second?
Second.
By Joe, thank you, discussion. Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Jerdie?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Platt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Item 8.05 is a resolution calling for a public hearing to consider a grant application to the Minnesota Investment Fund, MIF, program, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Don.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Clayton, discussion. I think I'd like a little information from Amy on this.
Yes, um, thank you, Your Honor. New Flyer approached the city recently. We've been working in the last several months with them on an expansion at their facility here in Crookston. They have requested that we support by submitting with them an application to Minnesota Deed for some MIF dollars in the form of a forgivable loan in the amount of $280,000. That will help them supplement, if you will, the monies that they are investing in that expansion. So, for the city, our, our part in this is to help with the application. We do have some things to fill out. We will review through myself and our finance department, some of their financial documents, report back to Minnesota Deed. Part of that requirement of the application is to call a public hearing as part of this application process, and that is the resolution that you have before you, is setting the time and date of that public hearing for the MIF application for your next meeting on August 23rd at 7:00 p.m. And we will invite Mr. David Rhodey that evening to answer questions for you, likely provide you some information on the expansion, and then, after that, you would have the opportunity to vote on the submission of the application.
Did they say anything about how many new jobs they'll be adding with this expansion or anything?
Yes, they did, and I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I will look at that and get it to you, I'm sorry, but I will ask Mr. Rhodey to make sure that information to you.
Okay.
They are adding a parallel production line at the facility, and it will be bringing some jobs, I believe, from some other plants, and he will have that information. I will make sure and pass that on so he can provide that to you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Jerdie?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Platt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Item 8.06 is a resolution to accept the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund established under the American Rescue Plan Act, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Joe, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Clayton, discussion. I would like, we received funding already, or?
We did. We've received the first distribution in the amount of, it was about a little over $410,000. There will be a second distribution made to us. Our estimated allocation is approximately $821,500. There could be some adjustments to that at the end. It could be up. There are some cities that are electing not to accept the dollars because they're having trouble finding ways to spend the dollars. So, it's possible, if there's a number of cities that do not take their allocation, that it could be spread amongst the other cities. So, that final distribution amount will be determined at a later time. We have, I believe, until 2024 to spend down, is that right, Ryan? Okay, 2024 to spend down those dollars. We are discussing with staff. We are provided through various entities, Baker Tilly's, our financial representatives, the league have provided information on what categories and projects are acceptable for those funds. We are working on proposals that will come back before you with staff to make recommendations to you on how we believe those dollars can be spent. So, this is just to accept the allocation. The league recommends the resolution done by you, and then, sorry.
So, why would cities, I mean, every city can find a way to spend money, I think, but why would a city, or is there a reason? If we all spend it by a certain time, is there a penalty, or?
I don't believe so, I'm sure that the...
There isn't a penalty. It's the paperwork that's required, but this is a lot more reporting than what the CARES Act was, and the guidelines in this are a lot more stringent on what we can be spent for.
Okay.
In fact, the league is recommending that we go to our city attorney for multi-projects that we want to continue to go forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion?
Amy, is there like a simplified version of like what basically these can be spent on or can't be spent on?
There, there is. There's some charts that we've been provided through some websites and some webinars that we've watched, and we are sorting through those now, but some of them do a really nice job of giving you a broad category and then examples of things going down. There's some neighboring cities that are electing to use their dollars to help citizens remediate lead pipe that's actually on the citizen's side but is impacting the city's lead levels. So, that's a benefit both to their citizens and to the city's water system. So, that's one example that we've heard about recently in a neighboring city. We are investigating some things that can be used here in our community in that way, and to upgrade some of our systems, things like that, that we'll be bringing before you, but we can provide you a chart that shows a little bit of an overview of what some of those things can be used for.
It isn't really like the CARES Act money then that went out to individual businesses?
That's correct. It's, it is not. This is directed coming to the city, and a lot of them, infrastructure is one that, one of the recommendations to look at. So, it's, it's different in that the CARES money was more to be allocated and pushed out to businesses, where this is more for the city to utilize to make improvements for the community.
So, for example, with the project we have with the DOT, is that, is there a possibility that some of that money could be?
On the corridor study?
Yeah. I mean, not just the corridor study, but when it comes to paying for that, whatever our costs, our, with that, is, is that something, I mean?
I'm not sure. I will look and see if that fits in. I think there's a couple of resources we can reach out to and ask those questions as well, if we have a potential project, so I will check on that.
Any further discussion?
Since the league is suggesting to use our city attorneys on this, can any of this money be used for legal fees and that kind of stuff?
I, I don't remember seeing that as a category for that, but I can double-check that.
Any further discussion? Have roll call, please.
Jerdie?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Platt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Okay.
Item 8.07 is a resolution to approve the State of Minnesota Agency Agreement for the Federal Airport Expense Reimbursement, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Wayne, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Don, thank you, discussion.
Your Honor, this actually is related to a grant agreement that you approved, I'm looking at my notes, in April. It's the $13,000, it was a Corona response grant for our airport. Mendot needs to have a separate agreement. The one you approved before was the federal agreement, so it's not accepting any different dollars, it's just a second piece of that that Mendot requires for that same grant. So, kind of more of a administrative piece here to finish that grant acceptance and get the paperwork moved forward.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Jerdie?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Platt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Item 8.08 is a resolution to approve entering into a subordination agreement with the Meadows LLC, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Thank you, Tom, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Clayton, discussion.
Your Honor?
Yeah. I was gonna say, Amy, can you?
Yes, I'll just give a brief overview, and if there are more in-depth questions, the city attorney will be able to answer those. We were approached by the owners of the Meadows. They are looking at a refinance with a request for a subordination agreement. After review, we would still be fully collateralized should this resolution be approved and the subordinate, the subordination agreement go forward. Staff, city attorney finds no reason not to do it and recommends that you approve this resolution.
Further discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Jerdie?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Platt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Okay.
Item 8.09 is proving approval of epitome boundaries and discussion, Your Honor.
Okay, before discussion on this one, I do need to have a motion.
I'll make a motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Don, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom, now we're gonna have discussion. I think redo the land option agreement, we had to set the boundaries?
That is part of it, yes. Chad, do you have the map that you could put up for us? You have in your packets a, a sketch of description, and you'll see that up on the wall here. One of the issues that we had, there we go. One of the issues we were addressing as part of the Epitome Energy LLC discussion was needing to get the land to 60 acres. That had been the original discussion, the intent, how the purchase price was figured. The way the boundary was drawn before came out to 55.51 acres. If you remember in some prior sketches, that corner at the top there, just north of the boundary, was drawn in with some offices and a stormwater pond. I worked with the civil engineers at Wood Seth and also had discussions with Mr. Egan because that parcel at the top is stubbed with utilities and will have access already when what we are calling the Ag Innovation Road goes in through the bonding dollars. We felt that that piece of land may be better optimized by leaving it open for someone else to come in versus having some offices in a stormwater pond. Those then can be moved down. If you'll notice on the southern end, that part that comes out to the left is a newer section that gets that boundary you're seeing there in the pink, that makes that land, I believe it's 60.01 acres, so it meets the needs of the area. Mr. Egan has used his consultants and run air modeling tests, and those have all passed successfully, so that boundary is acceptable to move forward with the air permitting process. There was one other change, and it is a bit hard to see, but to the west of that, down that edge, is where what we're calling the Ag Innovation Road is. You can see it clear down to the bottom with a little cul-de-sac. Because of the width of that road that's necessary, it did push in his westerly boundary just a little bit, which we then made up at the bottom. And this will be, this new legal description and boundary will be needed when we put before you a revised land option agreement that will include these changes, and we hope to have that ready for you at your next meeting. Mr. Egan's legal counsel is drafting a memorandum of, of agreement for us to review that will be incorporated as part of that land option agreement, and then, when we have that, should we be able to get that reviewed, and then you should be seeing that before you on the 23rd.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Since the, since the utilities were up there in the north end, is that gonna cause any kind of a problem for them?
For Epitome Energy?
Yeah.
Nope, I don't believe so. No. Do you mean because they already exist there?
Right.
No.
Okay.
No, I don't think so.
Can they still use some utilities, or?
Yes, they will need some. There are some water lines, I'm not gonna be the expert on this, Brandon can jump in if I'm wrong, but there are some water, we are waiting to find out for sure what the water demand will be, to find out the best way to get utilities into the site, but I don't believe that parcel at the top, Ag Innovation will have utilities as well. That shouldn't impede any progress there on the Epitome site.
I seen Dennis was here. This works for you, Dennis? Okay, I'm fine with it.
And Amy, can I just ask, that space was possibly going to be used for vertical malt at one time, is that my understanding as well?
In review of early discussions and, and some minutes and documents, that, that parcel at the north was at one point penciled in, if you will, for vertical malt. I'm not sure if that is still the desire of vertical malt. I know they've considered a few other options, but that does leave that open again, if that's still a desirable space for them.
And then this gets back to 60 acres?
Yes, it's 60.01 acres, yeah.
Further discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Jerdie?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Platt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Okay.
Item 8.1, or item 8.10 is a resolution to approve the transfer of 3.2 malt liquor license for WOK Incorporated, doing business as Happy Joes of Crookston, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clayton, I do have a second.
Second.
Second by Joe, thank you, discussion. Hearing none, can I have roll call?
Jerdie?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Platt?
Aye.
Bedbroughton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Item 8.11 is a resolution to amend the City of Crookston water use restrictions, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Tom, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Christie, discussion?
Your Honor, if I could provide comment for the council, there were communication from parents to some of our staff, and then we visited about this at our most recent park board meeting. The request was possibly to shift the restricted hours of the splash park to allow a few more hours after parents were getting off work and feeding the children. So, this, the change you're seeing, and the only change to the water use restrictions is restricted splash park hours that were initially set from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. and shifting that from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. That came as a recommendation from the park board, and staff also recommends approval.
Thank you.
We, we don't have to have anybody stay later or anything for this, do we?
It does have to be turned off?
Right.
By staff, and then also, we have staff that goes back and locks up the bathrooms and those things, yeah.
Have they been doing that in the past, or was this, or what was their time before?
On the splash park?
Yeah.
I don't believe it was turned off before, Scott?
It was before the, before we went into the water restrictions, we were on a timer. And I haven't put it on the timer now because I don't wanna mess with it at the moment because it took me forever to get it set. So I just go back and shut it off or somebody else runs it and shuts it off.
Okay.
Scott, there's still a delay where the water comes on, nobody's under it or using it, shuts off?
Yeah, after six minutes, if the button hasn't been re-pushed, then it shuts off.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Jertie?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ted Bratton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Right.
Item eight point one two is a resolution approving plans and specifications and calling for bids on the Central Park campground improvements, Your Honor.
I'll make a motion, Your Honor.
I have a motion to approve it by Don, thank you, second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Clayton, discussion?
Is there a set amount of money on this thing that the city is gonna have to come up with to finish this?
Yep.
Yes, there is and it's in front of you in this packet on the last page, I'm sorry, second page, inside of a red rectangle. The city's share right now is allocated for the bath house. Cost funded by municipality is set to be three hundred forty-five thousand, five hundred dollars, we do have that budgeted. What you have in front of you are plans and specs that have been before the park board at their August fourth meeting. The plans up in front of you do include, after our most recent council meeting, we tabled this resolution to see about adding more pull-throughs. There were three pull-throughs initially, you now see seven. That did impact the total number of spaces from thirty-three to twenty-eight, but the park board felt that was acceptable. There was some discussion that as we get down the line, that possibly those pull-throughs could still be set up with two hookups. So if there was someone that still wanted to use those as two, we might be able to figure that out with a reservation, those types of things. The bath house, Chad, can you flip to that, do you have that one?
I do.
It's a little bit hard to see and I apologize for that and Rich Clausen could not be with us tonight. The bath house is set up similar to others in our area, the main difference being it will be a storm shelter. That is what that budget was initially developed on the concept of. There has been discussion about possibly redesigning with family, with a family stall or multiple family stalls. The cost of that right now will be time and dollars for design. We are in a bit of a crunch right now, we need to get out to bid as quickly as possible. This project has to be completed and that's also in your packet here, we will make this available to the public as well. June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two, campground and bath house projects must be completed. So we really do as quickly as possible, if there are changes that need to be made, we need to have a firm decision on that, preferably tonight, get started and be able to come back to you. I will say, at this point, based on the budget and the unknown fiscal impact of changes, both in design work, time and cost to the overall project, is not my recommendation to continue with redesign, however, that final decision is up to you as a council.
Thank you. Discussion?
Well, I guess on that part, I see how the Gently Bridge one went way over budget. If this thing comes in, it's way over budget, then what do we do?
Well, I will tell you this, on the Gently Bridge budget, you were over from the minute you awarded a contract that was sixty-six thousand dollars over. Had I been here, I would have recommended that you reject all bids, go back to the grant administrator, see if there's more funds available, or go out again for bid. That didn't happen, so should that happen here, we will have that conversation with you as a governing body. But that was approved, that was an approved contract, that was awarded, you were over budget before the project started on the Gently Bridge. I don't wanna muddle that too much with this because I would handle that differently as your full-time administrator. We would come back and have that discussion about how to proceed if that were the case. This will be bid out as two separate, so you'll have the bath house will go out as one bid and then the campground will go out as another, so some work can be simultaneous. But if either or both of the bids come back outside of the budget, we'll be back before you.
Can we do one without the other? Can we do the bath house and not the campground if the bids come in way too much?
Um, that's probably a question we'd have to go back to the grant administrator about.
I think with the grant dollars, it goes strictly to the campground and for us to receive the grant, we need, our cost was the bath house.
And they even cover a bit of the bath house, which that budget was roughly four hundred and fifty thousand. Now, I do wanna remind you, these budgets were developed, I believe the agreement was signed in two thousand twenty. We are in a different time now. It is very possible that we'll be back before you with some challenges to that budget because of supplies, because of cost of materials. I'm not as concerned about having people that would like to bid on the work, but what that bid comes back compared to a two thousand twenty budget that was developed based on concept, we may, we may need to come back and discuss how to move forward and coordinate with the grant administrator on how that might look.
Is there any federal funding for that bath house?
I don't believe so, this is through, I don't have that in front of me. I think it's the legacy dollars.
Legacy through the state of Minnesota.
I don't, I don't, not that I know of.
I was just wondering because of the storm shelter type thing.
We can ask around that question, see if we can find someone that can get us an answer on that. Like for our share, do you mean? For our portion?
Yeah, just. I thought there was some discussion on it, John Byer, I'm not sure what the county had gotten for theirs, but I had, can't remember all the whole details on it, but I thought there was something.
Okay, we are happy to check on that.
Okay, thank you.
Seems to me we did look at grants before we even were looking at a campground as far as safe storm shelter, whatever, even at Highland. And what I'm hearing is they're hard to come by because everybody around the state is looking for the same grant dollars. So it's kinda finding a needle in a haystack with that. Further discussion?
My only concern, and I brought this up before, was having some type of family bathroom. I know I had asked Amy if there was some way to talk to the architect about maybe just putting a toilet in one of the shower stalls in order for that to kind of make that happen in its own way. I understand also that not wanting to spend too many more dollars in a redesign. And so I am curious to know if that is something that could happen, maybe like in that, the ADA, the shower stall that could have a bathroom in that and then maybe that in itself could provide that space without doing a complete redesign. But I don't know what those costs are and I know that Amy had had that phone call in to see if that was something that would be not very significant or if that would be something that would be way over budget and I understand ultimately us making sure that we're being as physically responsible is a big thing here, but just throwing that out there that that was something that is still a question, question mark.
We had, we did not hear back from the architect, I was able to speak to Rich this morning, but he couldn't be with us this evening. That is still an unknown answer, I don't know, I don't know what regulations and things they would have to follow as far as spacing, so those types of things we would need to rely on, on them to provide for us.
And most, you know, most people that are camping are campers, they've got facilities in their campers, so as far as the camper's using this, I don't know that it'd be so many of the campers using it as, maybe other people.
Yeah, I mean, family bathroom regardless of who you are, right? So, but I also understand the interest of time here, but.
Further discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Jertie?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ted Bratton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Good.
Item eight point one three is a resolution to approve hiring the new park and recreation director, Jacob Solberg. Your Honor, I have placed an updated copy in front of all of the council members and yourself, I also have some over there as well. And I will update on the website, there was a clerical error and I have updated that in front of you.
Thank you, Ashley. Motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clayton, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Don, discussion?
Your Honor, if I may, we did have an interview committee that had representation from our school district, the city council, the park board, myself, our IT director and our HR generalist. And also then presented to the parks and rec board, the parks board, I'm sorry, our interview committee's recommendation to move Jacob Solberg before you as the city administrator's recommendation for our next parks and rec director, I am pleased to be sitting here making that recommendation to you today. Jake is here this evening and would stand for any questions, but Jake is local. We were really excited about his interview, he brought a calmness and a consistency to his answers. I think that's something that our city as an organization and our community and that department can really benefit from and I see some really great potential in moving forward with that.
Thank you, Amy.
Jake, do you have anything to say to us tonight?
Jake, can I invite you to the electric, please?
Over here. And everybody can hear you.
Well, I'm excited to be here. I am originally from Silver Bay, Minnesota, I came to college here and got a degree in sport rec management. I have been in recreation since I was fifteen, part-time and I got a full-time job in two thousand eleven as I took on a rec coordinator position in Willis, North Dakota. My newly wife and I moved out there during the oil boom and was out there for a little over four years. I left there as a rec superintendent, I was in charge of all recreation that we had in that town. And it went from like night and day from the population growth that we had out there, so one year we had twenty kids and the next year we had sixty, so in a blink of an eye, so it was really a eye-opener and a good learning experience. Moved back to Minnesota, took a position in Austin and then as a rec superintendent and my wife got accepted a job here in Kirkston, her hometown, in Altrum, so we moved back. I currently work for the East Grand Forks parking rec, but I hope to be starting here next month, so. A little bit about myself, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Jertie?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ted Bratton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Right.
Item eight point one four is a resolution to approve increasing the budget for the street department to purchase a stump cutter, cutter, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clayton, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe, discussion?
Does this just come out of public works budget?
Actually, the amount, so it was budgeted for and then the low bid came over, so the amount needed will come out of the central garage fund, I almost forgot the name of it. Central Garage Fund does receive funds from other departments, if you will, to fund for those things and the balance is sufficient to cover that.
So what did we do before? Did we not have one or are we replacing or did we hire it out?
Brandon?
We're replacing a unit that has a crap block. It's, they don't make the blocks anymore, so it's irreparable, so it's, we're replacing. I don't know where the shortfall came from, I don't know if Pat was planning on trading in the old one, but with the condition of the, it doesn't have any value still. So it's just replaced that.
Does it get used a lot throughout the year?
Yeah, and you know, unfortunately with all the trees he's in town right now, it's probably gonna be a lot used in the next few years.
And I think with the storms we had in the last few years, it was up and running quite a bit, I know I had seen it.
Yeah, you know, it's, 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 you guys have a lot of trees.
Can you still sell it for parts or junk or are you?
Yeah, we'll put it in auction, we'll definitely still put it in that online auction or scan, so we'll run it through that once we do our next round. So we will get something on it.
Do we know how old that machine was?
I am not a hundred percent sure what year that machine was.
Well, knowing Pat, it's probably older than you, Brandon, so.
I was gonna say that.
Further discussion?
I think I'll be now. Saving money with the city crew doing, taking down trees and doing a stump ground here, I think it's well worth it.
I know people of Kirkston appreciate it, my neighbor was one of them, she has, she has cancer and she had a tree fall and they were Johnny on the spot right there the next morning before I could get my chainsaw and they cleaned it up and they were there within a few days because she was worried about the stump and they done and dirted and she had nothing to worry about. So it's much appreciated that they do that and they're so quick about it, so.
Further discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Jertie?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ted Bratton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
All right.
Your Honor, item eight point one five is a resolution requesting the engineering report for the mechanical services for the sanitary lift station ventilation improvements, Your Honor.
Motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clayton, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tom, discussion?
Your Honor, I'd like to provide just a few comments. It has been identified by our public works director that our four sanitary sewer lift stations have a very serious problem. That problem is that the ventilation systems in all four of our lift stations are non-functional. Some are non-existent to the point they have deteriorated to the point of falling off the wall. What that does or does not do, however you wanna look at that, is right now, if, when our crew goes down there daily, they have to open the door and run a blower for fifteen minutes to get the gases out where the oxygen level is safe enough for them to go down. I know our public works director and myself think that is very unsafe and to me just not something we can continue on with. To get the engineering done on those four lift stations in order to develop plans and specs to go out for bid, it will be about a twenty thousand dollar cost. AE2S does the electrical engineering and that is the firm that we regularly engage for our sanitary lift stations. And then KFI, which is what you are being asked to approve as far as the proposal would do the mechanical engineering, develop plans and specs, they are going to develop those each lift station individually so that if we are at a point where we have to prioritize and have that discussion, we can. It is my very strong recommendation and I do urge you to please allow us to move forward with this engineering and get our lift stations where it's safe to send our crews down in. I'm uncomfortable and I don't wanna get a phone call that we didn't do this and we have a much more serious issue on our hands.
Well, I assume this is considered a confined space under OSHA standards and we have certain requirements that we have to follow when sending people down in those spaces?
Brandon, would you mind going to, thank you?
Yeah, the spaces are confined and you know, with, we could just, we can't just look at the old plans for the lift stations. The standards have changed, so now that we have to start from scratch, they need to be redesigned. The area has to be turned over every so often. The ventilation systems will be on a timer to run, so it's not just flipping on a switch and it's only running when the crews are there. It's to ensure that the air is safe long before they get there, so it's, yes, it's an OSHA issue.
Is it, I mean, obviously it's not safe to go down there now, so is it, I mean, is there anything we need to do immediately?
And that's what I did as a temporary fix, is the water department had a confined place, space blower. So they are opening the door and they're like putting that blower outside, letting it run. And they have their gas monitor when they go in, so the fire department helps them calibrate that to make sure it's working properly, so I think we're in an okay place temporarily, I'm just not comfortable leaving the situation the way it is, there's, there's no, you know.
Well, for twenty thousand dollars, I can't see not doing it. To lose an employee, whatever, the safety of our employees.
This is just, this is just design.
We have reviewed the public works reserves and do feel that they are sufficient and and I do believe it would be really imperative that we would. I do believe it would be really imperative that we would find a place to put that expenditure when we get that, to make sure that our crews are safe, and I think we can do that. We'll have a better idea, though, what that's going to look like as a total project when we get the plans and specs developed.
Yeah, it's just good due diligence to do this, so nobody gets injured.
Going forward, it is not my practice, and also not that of our current staff, to let things deteriorate to the level that we have to be before you, talking about safety issues of this nature. We will be, and you will see some of that in the budget. That historically has taken place, and there's some things that I feel should have been addressed quite some time ago that haven't yet. We cannot do everything in one year, but it is important to us to be putting those things before you. And then if cuts need to be made, it is my hope that you'll allow us to go back and prioritize those as far as safety and what deferred maintenance may need to be addressed first.
I know we've kind of talked about this on other topics, but is there training provided to our city staff, like for a situation like this on confined space? At our company, we have to train our employees for how to react to different types of confined spaces, so is that something that you guys do?
The fire department just completed confined space training with wastewater about a month ago.
All right.
So they're up to date on that, and we intend to continue that.
Brandon, is that annual training?
Uh, Tim, do you know?
Yeah, we do it annually.
Okay.
And if they get a new employee, we pull all of their wastewater guys in and anybody that will help assist with the wastewater, we bring them in and train them, and then we're ready on the backup for them.
Good.
And this comes out of the wastewater budget.
There's money in there, isn't there?
We looked at the public works reserves, yes, in the wastewater fund, yes. We do feel that it's certainly sufficient to cover this expense. While it's not in a budgeted line item, we do feel that the reserves can cover this, and then we'll just have to rely on our information and what comes from the plans and specs to bring before you our best recommendation for the remediation.
I think, you know, this is an important piece, and I think that it needs to go through, but I also would like to see us not be in this space again and to have very clear procedures to make sure that we're checking these things and that it doesn't get to the point where it's falling off the wall.
Yes.
But being very clear about that, so we're not in this position where we're possibly putting.
That has been, we've had many discussions at the department head level with me as a group. That is my expectation of our staff, is to not, I don't, I don't want to learn of a problem when we're at this level, and that's, you know, Brandon has done a really nice job coming in and putting his eyes on things and bringing things forward. That is an expectation of all of our staff, no matter the level report up, and when it's something that needs to come before you, it needs to come to me. And our department heads do a really nice job. We are incorporating that as part of our ongoing discussions, our budget discussions, trying to, and be proactive, not waiting until we have a problem like this to be before you, having these conversations. So I appreciate that you are all supportive of that way of moving forward for us as well.
So is there any inspections, uh, Brandon, that's being done on other things of concern far as where a yearly inspection, say like you said, on the sewer system or on the pumps or?
I intend to have an, you know, a monthly, we used in the water department a computerized reminder maintenance system, so you would set the, if you want to check your pumps monthly or quarterly, and then you get an email reminder to do that, and if it's not completed, in however many days you set up, it sends you a reminder. So I need to get all that. I'm working on getting the wastewater department on that, on that schedule, and like I said before, I'm trying to, trying to see what we're doing wrong, and I'm working towards fixing it. But I wasn't, I wasn't involved in the wastewater at all before. We're gonna, I'm working towards interconnecting the water and wastewater departments so they can help each other out, and it just, it makes a lot of sense for call purposes. Right now, we have two staff on call on the weekend. We're gonna cross-train, so we only need one staff on call on the weekend. They'll cover all departments, so that's one of the things I'm working on right now, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Further discussion? Hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Jordy?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Bedbretton?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
All right. Moving on.
Oops.
Start with Amy.
Thank you. We made it through that long list. Jake, congratulations. I look forward to you starting on the 7th. And thank you to mayor and council for moving that recommendation forward. I think that's going to be a great addition. I think there were some exciting things on our agenda tonight that have to do with economic development and expansion and jobs in our community, so thank you for moving those things forward, and those will be back before you for further discussion. Oxcart Days is just around the corner. I've been seeing a lot of great things about that, so I think, I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Amy. Greg, anything tonight?
Nothing to report, your honor. Just one quick reminder, the planning commission next Tuesday night. That's it.
Please remind her to staff to please come to the podium. Thank you. Just so everyone knows, that is so people that are watching on our YouTube channel can hear. It's not because I'm trying to make a spectacle or anything, but people that are tuning in from their couches or their bedrooms want to be able to hear as well, so.
Just to repeat, no report, your honor, but just a reminder for the planning commission that's going to be meeting on Tuesday night next week on the 17th regarding Our Lady of Sorrows, Mariens, for a new edition they're looking at, so that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Looks like Paul's up and moving, so we'll go to him next.
Can you hear me now, Chad? Can you hear me now?
Oh.
Two things, mayor and council. First of all, I'm happy to report tonight that made a final offer to a local person. Lauren Edivold is his name. He's from up in the gully, Gonvek Clearbrook area, currently works at the correction center, and he accepted the offer today, so it'll be a couple, two to three weeks before he'll start. Lives in town, owns a house in town, so we're pretty excited about that one. Secondly, just a lot of thank yous for Night to Unite. A big thank you to UMC for, it was a lot of work, Joe, thank you.
Yep.
The grounds crewed excellent out there. Everybody at UMC was just an absolute wonderful partner to work with from the beginning to the end. Also to Walmart for financing the primary, or primarily most of the expenses. Good turnout, a lot of compliments, especially on the venue out there. I think what we saw was a lot of more interaction of everybody, from the people with the booths to the people who were attending. Just much more socializing going on, and I think a lot more uniting on that night like it's supposed to be. Hats off to some of our officers, too. We changed that up a little bit this year. We gave, across the board, there was more gift cards given out than there were prizes, but we included adults this year, and I think the adults enjoyed that. But we gave our officers several different kinds of gift cards also, so when they engaged with the kids more, threw the balls a little bit more, played catch, did several other things, the beanbag toss. So I was happy to see that the officers got just more involved with the kids. Also, I think thanks to everybody who took part. I don't know for sure who from the council was up there. I was too busy walking around, but thank you, everybody. Fire department, park department helped out, street department, I think everybody was there, one form or another, to help out and make it a great night. Our post meeting is tomorrow at 2:00. We've got, I don't know that we really have any complaints, but we've got, we've been offered lots of good suggestions to improve it for next year again, so. Any questions on any of that?
It's a great event.
It was. I really enjoyed it, too.
You're a great emcee. You're a great emcee.
Yeah, right. Thank you. I mean, thank you, yeah. Well, biffed it on the steps and dropped on my business cards. What did Steve think? They were get out of jail free cards?
Thanks, Paul.
All right, your honor. Good evening and council. Just a couple things here. Again, I just want to thank everybody who did participate in that Night to Unite, and Paul, your staff did a great job pulling that all together, so congratulations on that. The fire department did receive a DNR grant to pick up and buy some more tools and equipment and pagers and stuff, so I just want to announce that. That was kind of a nice deal. It's always nice to get free money out there. We're in the process, just offered four new paid-on-call firefighters' jobs, and I actually had an interview with one tonight, started his orientation, and I'm doing a couple more tomorrow, so we're getting them back up to full staff. We had a lot of good ones that applied, and we're starting to fill up those slots, so that's really good. Looking forward to working with these guys. Oxcart activities, as everybody knows, that's going to be very busy due to the drought conditions. We, they've had to cancel a couple of the events with water wars, the mud run, and if we don't get any more rain anytime soon, we probably will have to cancel the fireworks, or I should say postpone them, so we're keeping a close eye of the clouds. And speaking of which, I can't believe we're actually in a severe thunderstorm watch right now. I haven't said those words forever, so hopefully we can get a little bit of moisture out of the clouds tonight and help us all out. And that just goes with the dry conditions. Once again, just a warning of be very safe when you're out grilling, doing bonfires, what have you in your backyard. Talked with the DNR, they're talking about stopping campfires, and then that might roll over into us of maybe putting a kibosh to bonfires, so we will just see what happens here. Hopefully, we get a little bit of rain tonight, and welcome to Jacob, too, besides Before I Forget, so. That's it.
Thanks, Tim. Ryan, anything?
Good evening. Just to follow up, we had Brady Martz in our office last week. They are hoping to finish their review and start putting their findings together for us. We have findings that have got to be done by August 17th, and they are anticipating meeting those deadlines at this time, but Amy and I will keep you guys apprised of how those things go. And as far as the MIF application that we talked about tonight, NewBlair's looking at about 35 new jobs is what David Rode is saying, but this MIF application is quite a booklet of things that have to get all completed, and this is actually the first one I've ever seen or done and visited with a couple other cities around us, and they've never completed a MIF application before.
I believe this is Crookston's first, the city of Crookston's first MIF application we've participated in as well.
And do have a lot of good support people down Minneapolis that are going to help us with this process, what things we need to look at and take care of. And I just spoke with them this morning on the phone, and very, very helpful people to get us through all this process. But this public hearing, we have to send all those minutes to this application when we submit it all formally. And then budgets, we're getting very close. Amy and I have spent a lot of time going through all of them. This is the first year that other staff people have had input into their budgets, which I think is great, and coming up with the numbers. When we look at these numbers, Amy and I are really diving down into them to see what all makes up these numbers, and it's going to be a big change, I think, this year for all you guys to see these numbers and be able to ask the questions of what makes up these numbers and what can we do better, and what do we need to improve on, and there's a lot ahead of us yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chad, anything?
Yes, your honor. I'll keep one hand on the wheel here and the camera on me. The IT department was very busy the last, last couple of weeks at the fire department. We installed a Microsoft Surface Pro tablet setup for Chief Prober, and then reissued his former laptop in the alarm room. We also upgraded firefighter office monitors and provided for new Bluetooth speakers that are mounted in the ceiling along with display extenders for a training room projector. Over at the police department, we performed some maintenance on the police department server to free up some needed space for police case-related files, and we'll be looking at a needed upgrade there very soon. Following a managed print services agreement that we put in place at the city that provided for new printers, the IT department reorganized the computer workstations to accommodate those printers. And then at the PD as well, and this is just recent, within the last day, IT will be purchasing two new Surface tablets using grant monies for the investigator positions. At City Hall, IT performed some weekend repair of our network due to some failed components and failed wireless equipment that connected City Hall and the fire department. We've ordered replacement hardware, and that includes future shelf spares for when and if a failure like that should occur again. We repaired the city's data backup system that was down due to networking, due to that network issue, and we have received, the IT department has received broadband and facilities connectivity upgrade proposals from both the Connet Communications and Holstead Telephone Company. I'm presently reviewing those proposals, and I'll be making a budget recommendation to council for 2022.
Thank you. Scott, anything? Okay. Brandon, anything else to add?
The street improvement projects are coming along. They started on North Central. We're trying to get the sidewalks done for Oxcart parades so that we don't have to switch the parade route. It's, it looks like we'll make it as long as we don't have a severe wet event here.
Sure it's gonna happen.
You can be hopeful.
That's what it takes.
The street crews making a pass through town, sweeping the streets. We're still looking for a street maintenance employee, so I plan to interview again here in the next week or so. That's it, I think. Short and sweet.
On the, on the street projects, if they're not going to be working on the street, can they take them signs down, you know, street closed? I know like up by the five-way stop, they took that one corner sidewalk out, and nothing else has been going on, and all the people are driving around the sign.
That's one thing I should mention. I did come up with, we have ARC online subscriptions, so I created a public map that the public can see the road closures. They're labeled for closed for through traffic, closed, and I've kind of looked at it and come up with what I think is the best alternative route so that people know. It's a mess on that North Central Elm Riverside area just because of the nature of the project, so. But I've, I've asked the contractors to keep that Elm and East Sixth Street intersection open, so they did move those signs. You know, once you have the curb out, we just leave the signs up for local traffic just for liability purposes, so. I do, there's a link on the city website, and we put it on the Facebook page, too, so I, I've asked them, the contractors, to let me know before they change road closures, if they're opening, closing, switching from closed to through traffic to completely closed, so I can change that in about 30 seconds. I intend to keep that map as accurate as the information I'm giving here, so that was, I heard that and I saw the need for that, so.
Brandon, I think that's the slowest I've seen my traffic move beside by my house, so I'm happy there. Thank you.
I noticed this morning that up in that area, they were hauling class five ground ones, so it must be getting close to laying curbs and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, North Central, they poured on Friday. They kind of have to do a series to get a couple pads, and then their grade two, those pads is poured later, so. I would imagine North Central sidewalks will be complete by the end of the week. There'll still be some dirt work to be done. We'll, we'll probably have to put some caution tape up just to keep people. Well, we'll probably have to put some caution tape up just to keep people away from it for the parade, but if there are all the construction in that area, there's not really a good route to swap to, so I hope we don't have to find a better option. If we do, we'll figure it out, but.
Your honor, if, if I could add, I bet no one in this room has a harder time getting around town with the construction than me. And no joking aside, I have trouble finding my way home right now with all the construction, but the map has helped me, I used it today and followed your suggested route. Please do be mindful, if you choose to drive around a sign, sometimes there are workers very close in the road having to get work done. If you can avoid it, please do so that those people are safe and can get their work done. I know it's difficult, it really is challenging for me. I'm not even making a joke, there's been a couple of times I had to pull over and figure out what was going on. But please do remember that even if we don't see them at that moment, I have driven by where people were very close to that intersection and people kind of driving, driving around, their trailers are out. So just keep that in mind if, we will keep the map updated and we have it out on our Facebook page, our website and we'll kind of keep bumping that post so people can get to it easily. But do remember that there's people working and their equipment is out and I've seen some piles of dirt, so for safety reasons, if you don't have to go down one of those streets that's blocked, please try to avoid it. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Brandon. We got County Commissioner Will Ayer here, do you have anything to add tonight?
Anything tonight?
Thank you. Start with Tom.
Just welcome, Jacob. And then, yeah, the night, the United night was a very good night out there. You guys did a good job, everybody did.
Thank you, Delane?
Just keep Erickson family and Steve and your thoughts and prayers. You know, I think he's doing fine now and I think I heard he's going to be coming home soon, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Joe?
Just have a quick update on the CBB. We had a meeting last week and a few things they wanted me to mention. On the visitors guides, it's been over 7,000 handed out. Duluth and St. Cloud both asked for 900 more because they ran out. So they are getting out there, Crookston, the word's getting out. They're going to be out around for ox cart days and stuff like that. Second thing is, is the second entrance sign is up and it is being landscaped as we speak. It should be done within just a few days. I think, I've heard nothing but positive things on that. Of course, we've talked about it many times, but with delivery of product and different things, it was kind of a little bit of a delay there, but I, I think it's a, it's a good thing. And then also they have put out a 30-second ad and it'll be running on iNews, Apple TV, Amazon Fire, Chromecast and other smart TV platforms. They're hoping to do that quarterly. There was a film crew out at UMC last week, kind of the same one that they use for these ads. So he did go through some, some shops and, and different retailers uptown for the next push of a shop small for November. So that'll be a good thing since he's in town, it's nice to use him while they're here and, and it's probably a little cheaper too, I would imagine. And then they're also going to be in town next week and they're going to do some more on ox cart days and then some of the orientation at the college and stuff for future ads. So just want to let you know that that's going on, there are lots going on at CBB, so.
Thanks, Joe.
Joe, would you, would you like us to play the video?
What's that?
Would you like us to play the video?
Yes, please, I did hear you did have that, sorry, I seen it kind of pass by, but that'd be great.
Let me get it started.
Thank you.
Now that it's time to get out and explore, think big about going small. To a place full of history, Crookston, Minnesota, where you can relax, reconnect and remind yourself of what really matters. Where we do small town bigger and better than anyone and where greatness is found in the tiniest details. Find yourself in Crookston, northern Minnesota's grandest small-town getaway.
Very nice.
Very nice. Thanks for reminding me of that one.
All right. Thanks, Joe. Don, anything?
Yeah, I've met with the chamber office and they have a new director and they've met twice so far this year. And they began visitor, visiting the new downtown businesses recently and welcome in the new downtown businesses, so that's what they're doing right now. That's what they're, they're doing right now.
Thanks, Don.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Clayton?
I'd just like to thank the Ox Cart Committee for doing all the work that they've been, I've been seeing different things on Facebook and Crookston connects and it seems like every day there's something added, so I think it's going to be probably one of the biggest events ever. I'd like to thank them. That's it.
Thank you. Kristi?
I'll echo Clayton on that. I've been very impressed with all the advertising and things that have been done with that, so you guys did a good job and just a shout out to them. I met with the DCDP to talk about the next Chalk It Up event, which is happening on September 11th. And so we are looking for volunteers and people to help out with that event, if anybody is interested. Also, Park and Rec, we have, Park Board, we had our meeting this last week, which I think the two things we covered there have been covered here this evening, so there's no need to reiterate the new director and the campground, but everything seems to be good, so.
Thank you, Kristi. Wayne?
Well, also good luck to the Ox Cart Day Committee that's coming up quicker than they think. Always does. Amy, are we having a, a Cheetah meeting next week? There's none, there was none listed, but we talked about it on the 17th, are we still going to do that? Did I get a notice on that or something?
Yes, it is planned 7:00 AM on Tuesday.
The 17th.
At Valley Tech Park, yes. The agenda is being worked on now, but I think I sent you guys a preliminary list of, of what items we expected to be on there, still working through some. Thank you for that, that was a nice, nice little piece there. We don't have yet the finalized audit back, but if that comes back in time, we'll have that before you on the agenda. But yes, there is still the plan to meet and the ladies at Cheetah will get media notices out and things like that fairly quickly.
Seven AM, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Then also, nice to see some dirt being moved out at the Ag Innovation out there. But I didn't know, I thought 10 acres was a lot smaller than that. It looks pretty big when they start moving it around, but, so that's good. And I noticed Dennis must have had to leave, but nice to see him showing up and talking, making sure that we stay and communicate with what he's got going on, so.
I did get to meet with Jim Lambert and the gentleman that's on their, their contracting team. They are working on the link to get that construction video up, but they needed to check a few of the parameters to get the view-only link to me. So as soon as I get that, we will make sure and get the link on the Cheetah website, our website, and then share that out to our Facebook page, but just waiting on that view-only link to get pushed out to the public so anyone can jump on there and look at the progress they've made at the Ag Innovation campus site.
That's it.
Thank you, Wayne. Thank you, Amy.
Mr. Mayor, could I have an addendum to my speech?
Yes.
I want to, I'd like to, I'd like to welcome Jake Solberg. It's nice to have a UMC graduate on staff. Welcome to Crookston.
I got one more thing too, I just, another reminder from last week, this next Friday, the big Hershey event. Please to the council and anybody else, let them know the, I have a feeling it's going to be much bigger, especially when a few things are released here in the next days. So they're going to need all the help they can, if it's just us helping direct traffic or hand out candy bars or whatever it is, I think they'd appreciate all the help. So let them know if you can do that, that'd be great.
And this is going to be at the Town Square? And I think Nell said she'd like to have people there at 4:00?
What's that?
Nell said she'd like to have people there at 4:00 o'clock.
Yeah, I think it was, it was 4:00 to 7:00, I think it was.
She said it starts at 4:30, but...
Yeah, and they're going to have a film crew here, I know that for a fact. Other things I, I can't mention at this time, it'll enter the public here within the next day or so. It's going to be quite a big ordeal there, going to be taking pictures of downtown, of course, ox cart days, I think some canoeing and just about our, just about our town. They're all about a small-town feel and, and what they're doing and so it'll be quite a deal. I think once it, it gets out a little more into the public and communities surrounding us, it's, it's going to be very big, so might be the biggest thing we got going on right now, so.
So 4:00, 4:30?
Yeah, 4:00, 4:30, I think she told me 4:30, but you might be right now around 4-ish or so just to help get set up. And then basically what they need is just help directing people and traffic and handing things out, even just being there for questions. It's not going to be anything major. I think they have quite a good group doing the major stuff, so they just need our help for, you know, presence.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of things. They're having the Equine Arena out at UMC is going to be named after Mr. Dr. Casey. That is at 3:00 to 5:00 PM. I think they wanted to reach out to them, let you know you're coming. But that's on, I think Tuesday, right, August 17th? So that's 3:00 to 5:00, so it'll, it's a great honor for Dr. Casey. Also, I want to hats off at Ox Cart around the corner, you know, to the Park and Rec and the police and the fire for all they do, can't do it without them. And then also thought some prayers, once again, out to Steve and his family, so. I guess, long meeting, no ways and means, nothing else become for council, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Oh, and thank, welcome, Jacob, sorry.